For this meeting, to guidance, to make good laws and policies that will benefit the community and the city. Pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Dojé Reverend Stephen Chin for your inspiring message. And at this time, Councilor Wu will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, and to the land of our own, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilor Wu. Thank you Reverend Stephen Chin. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilor Murphy if he would come to the podium, please. And Council Murphy will do a presentation on behalf of EMS Week here and here in Boston and across the nation.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my privilege. Could I ask Council Presley to please join me here? It's my privilege with my colleague, Council Presley, to recognize that this week we're in the middle of National EMS Week. And Boston EMS for us is a vital public safety and public health service. Boston EMS responds to more than 120,000 requests for help each year, triggering over 135,000 responses and more than 83,000 transports annually. They work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to help keep Boston safe. It's a critically important job and a dangerous job, often putting the men and women of Boston EMS in unsafe circumstances while trying to help the residents and visitors of Boston. They run a different kind of EMS system, staffed mostly by EMTs who perform life-saving skills and rapid transport on most calls. They also have a small group of paramedics who respond to critical incidents and provide more advanced and sometimes invasive procedures to save lives. This practice of using EMTs to run most calls and using paramedics only for highly specialized skills is the inverse of what most services do. The result: highly qualified staff using the skills that they have trained on every single day to bring the very best medical care to the streets of Boston. Since it is budget season, I'll mention that this is also a more cost-effective way to deliver care, both for the patient and for the city. Couple their renowned skills with their progressive and innovative practice of piloting many advanced treatments in the field, effectively bringing the ER to the patient, and Boston is a national and worldwide model. Visitors from EMS systems worldwide come to observe how Boston EMS delivers the finest medical care. The world got a good look at their expertise just two years ago at the Marathon. Their command and coordination of treatment and transport of hundreds at the scene saved countless lives. I hope that you never need their assistance, but if you do, know that no one does it better. And by their numbers, they will help every resident of Boston inside of a six-year time period. Join with me in thanking them for the good work they do in extraordinary circumstances like at the Marathon, but also so what they do for this city every single day. I have the great honor to introduce members of Boston EMS in attendance. Jim Hooley, the Chief of Department, Jack Pierceall, Ed Hanson, Susan Schiller, Kevin Shea, and Joseph O'Hare, Deputy Superintendent's. James DiMaldo, who's a captain, Bill Lassard, a lieutenant, John Horn, a paramedic, John Belotus, a paramedic, Tyson Perro, EMT, Ray Aponte, EMT, Laura Siegel, Chief of Staff, and Erin Curran, Deputy Chief of Staff. If I could ask them all to join me here as well as...
All right. Thank you to my good friend and colleague, the Chair of Public Safety. In my role as the Chair of Women of the Committee on Healthy Women, Families, and Communities, honored to read the resolution. Whereas the Emergency Medical Services are a vital public safety and public health service, Boston EMS is the city's municipal emergency medical service, one of three public safety agencies, who respond to 9/11 calls. Boston EMS responds to more than 120,000 requests for help through the City of Boston's 911 emergency system, resulting in over 135,000 responses and more than 83,000 transports annually. Services provided 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The professional men and women of Boston EMS serve the citizens and visitors of our city with distinction and valor, often saving lives without regard for their own personal safety that has earned them and that has earned them an international reputation for excellence in their field. Boston EMS is a critical link between public health and public safety, with patient interaction skills that go beyond quality medical care to provide reassurance, information, and coordination with hospitals that define truly integrated pre-hospital care. It is hereby appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of Boston EMS by designating EMS Week now. We do hereby proclaim May 17 through the 23rd, 2015, to be National EMS Week in the City of Boston, and we urge all of our fellow Bostonians to join us in recognizing these outstanding emergency medical service personnel for their contribution to saving lives in our great city.
Thank you. If I could ask all my colleagues to please approach so we could do a group picture with Boston's most talented medical services. And I'd ask Jim Hooley, the Chief of Department, to come forward and say a few words on behalf of Boston EMS.
Jim Hooley, Chief Hooley. Thank you. Thank you. We can counsel President Lennahan, rest of councils, thank you so much. You know, we've come down in the last several years for this recognition, and to be honest with you, it doesn't get old. We enjoy it. Thank you very much. We appreciate it because we also feel like we're partners with you. We work very close with neighborhood organizations, and you guys are all speak up so well for them. So thank you so much for, again, bringing the focus onto the city that this is National EMS Week. We're really fortunate this year that Boston is actually hosting. We're the focus of the national recognition this year. Saturday over at Faneuil Hall is where we're going to have a service over there. I know this fly isn't on your seat, so I won't read it all, but the National Remembrance Service is going to be hosting in Boston. Last year it was down in New York at St. Pat's Cathedral. So it's quite a feather in Boston's cap to be hosting this in our Faneuil Hall. And it's open to the public. Anybody who wants to come by, thank you very much. Again, appreciate the recognition.
Thank you, Chief Hooley. I just neglected to mention one of the members here, Tony O'Brien, who's the Treasurer of Boston EMS's BPPA Division. Very important to mention the Treasurer. And I'd ask all, if we could just pose for a picture at this point, come up. Come on, everybody. Pretend like you like one another. Thank you. 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 Thank you, Councilor Murphy, and thank you, the team that represents Boston EMS Services. We're all very proud of you and appreciate everything that you do on behalf of our city and those who come to our city. If there are no corrections to be made, the minutes of the last meeting will stand approved. Seeing, hearing, no objections, the minutes are so approved. Madam Clerk, communications from his honor, the mayor, please.
Docket number 0909, message and order authorized in the City of Boston's Office of Economic Development to accept and expend a grant of $1,500,000 from the Economic Development and Industrial Corporation for the purpose of supporting the operational needs of the City of Boston's Office of Economic Development.
A docket 0909 will be assigned to the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor.
Docket number 0910, message and order authorized in the Mayor's Office of Emergency Management to accept and expend an additional grant of $31,817.90 from the U.S. Department of Homeland Securities Regional Catastrophic Preparedness Grant Program, grant for FY2011 for the purpose of catastrophic planning within the designated region, including the Boston urban area, Providence urban area, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, State of New Hampshire, and State of Rhode Island. Docket number 0335 was previously approved by the City of Boston, allowing OEM to accept and expend $1,148,877.20. This new award will bring the grant total to $1,180,695.10.
Councilor Murphy?
Mr. President, since we passed docket 0335, this is an addendum to increase that amount by $31,817.90. At this point in time, I move suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0910.
Thank you, Councilor Murphy. Councilor Murphy, move suspension of the rules and confirmation of the appointment... No, I'm sorry. I'm reading something else. Council Murphy, move suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0910. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. 0910 has passed. Thank you, Councilor. Madam Clerk, could you please read docket 0911 through 0914?
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 0911, message and order for confirmation of the renewal appointments of constables authorized to serve civil process upon filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1st, 2015 and ending April 30th, 2018. Docket number 0912, message and order for the confirmation of the appointments of new constables authorized to serve civil process upon filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1st, 2015 and ending April 30th, 2018. Docket number 0913, message and order for the confirmation of the renewal appointments of inspectional service constables authorized to serve civil process upon filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1st, 2015 and ending April 30th, 2018. And docket number 0914, message and order for confirmation of the appointment of new inspectional service constables authorized to serve civil process upon filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1st, 2015 and ending April 30th, 2018.
Council Flaherty?
Mr. President, move for a suspension passage on 0911, 0912, 0913, and 0194. Obviously, the service of civil process is an important function that impacts many of the various departments of the city, and a number of these constables have been waiting for a long time, and it affects their business and their ability to not only serve process but to also hire individuals to help them serve process. So I know that Madam Clerk has a front row seat to these constables, to their application process, and to the great work that they do on behalf of our city. And so at this time, I'd like to move for suspension and passage.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, move suspension of the rules and confirmation of the appointments of docket 0911. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0911 has passed. Council of Flaherty, move suspension of the rules and confirmation of the appointments of docket 0912. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0912 has passed. Council Flaherty, move suspension of the rules and confirmation of the appointment of docket 0913. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0913 has passed. And Council of Flaherty, move suspension of the rules and confirmation of the appointments of docket 0914. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0194 has passed. Amongst the chairs moving all over the place.
That's right.
Musical chairs. I love it. Thank you. Madam Clerk, reports of public offices and others.
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 0915, notices received from the City Clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the Mayor on papers acted upon by the City Council at its meeting of April 15th, 2015.
A docket 0915 will be placed on file.
Docket number 0916, notices received from the auditing department providing a list of fiscal 2015 reallocations made by the Mayor prior to April 15th, 2015 for the purpose of continuing operations.
Council Yancey?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I ask that this matter be referred to the Post Audit and Oversight Committee. It is a communications that indicate that $2.8 million has been transferred from the interests on temporary loans going to several departments, including the Office of Management, Budget Management, POCS and Recreation, and perhaps several others, Mr. President. We had a hearing earlier this week with property management, and they indicated they received some of the allocations, but they're not listed in this communication. So I just want to refer to the Post Audit and Oversight Committee to review these transfers.
A docket 0916 will be placed in the Committee on Post Audit and Oversight. Madam Clerk, reports of committees.
Docket number 0698, the Committee on Government Operations, to which was referred on April 8th, 2015. Docket number 0698, message and ordinance to amend the City of Boston's Code Ordinances, Chapter 6, Section 6.3, schedule of parking fines relative to street cleaning. Submitter report recommending the ordinance ought to pass in a new draft.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Council of Flaherty, on docket 0698.
Thank you, Mr. President. This matter was proposed by Mayor Walsh and referred to the Committee on Government Operations back on April the 8th. Now, this ordinance would add a new subsection to Chapter 6, Section 6-3, that would raise the fine from $40 to $90 for parking violations conducted in street cleaning areas that will be designated as pilot zones. Further, there'll be an increase in the penalty from $13 to $30 for not paying the fine in full. The Committee on Government Operations held the hearing on May 15th, and testimony from the administration was presented by BTD Commissioner Gene Affmeyandaka and Public Works Commissioner Michael Dennehy. The Public Works Commissioner, the Transportation Commissioner would have the authority to determine the pilot zones and increase the fine. An increase in fines would only apply within this pilot zone. Administration representatives referenced the towing program that was implemented back in 2005, stated that the program had been too punitive, and that an increase in the fine will serve as a deterrent for parking violations that would take place during street cleaning. Pilot zone will be determined on a case-by-case basis in Charlestown. Council La Matina's district, where approximately 5% of the towing for street cleaning parking violations occur, will be used as the first pilot zone designation. Testimony was given by representatives from neighborhood groups. A central concern was looking at neighborhood conditions when determining towable versus non-towable violations. The committee emphasized several concerns with respect to meeting street cleaning objectives, the increase in manual labor, enforcement, and community outreach and notice. As a result of the discussion, the hearing changes have been made to docket 0698. Specifically, the Commissioner of Transportation will have to present data collected from the pilot program to the City Council. A sunset clause has been included to the proposal, so that increased fines will expire on November 30th of 2015. This will allow the City Council to review the data from the pilot zone and analyze whether the increased fines assisted with the objective of cleaning our streets. And there was a technical change regarding the addition of a subsection that has been made to differentiate prior additions of amendments pertaining to specific parking fines. So with these changes in mind, with respect to the original docket, I recommend that docket 0698 ought to pass in a new draft. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Flaherty. Council La Matina?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended that hearing and offer my support with concerns. You know, we started towing, I believe, in 2005, particularly in the South End and Back Bay, where residents would rather have a $30 ticket than move their cars. I have received a lot of complaints in the past in regards to the towing and the inconvenience for someone who gets a car towed, who has to take a taxi from Charlestown to Cambridge. So you're paying $20, $25 for a taxi ride, another $100 and more for the tow plus the ticket. So it's an expensive day for those residents. So I want to give the city a chance to increase the fine to $90. We'll see if more people move their cars. But like I said, I'm going to watch it very, very carefully. I was driving to work this morning in East Boston, street cleaning. There was one truck there. He did not move, and there was all garbage around the truck. So with that, I am willing to give it a try. Thank you.
Thank you, Council La Matina. Council Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand to oppose the new draft. I just think that frankly, if they're not going to move their car when you tow it, and you're going to pay, they're going to pay to tow it, they're certainly not going to move their car with non-towing option. I think what we're going to find six or seven months from now, when this pilot program ends, is that it didn't work and that the streets in the neighborhood are going to be filthy, and people will leave their cars there. So I'm going to oppose this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Zakeham.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I want to start off by, you know, thanking Council Flaherty for his hearing, and I support the changes. With the changes that have been made with the sunset clause and the reporting back to the City Council, I can support this. I've heard from quite a few of my Beacon Hill constituents who are very concerned. I think that this might apply in that neighborhood. So after assurances from the Transportation Commissioner, a Public Works Commissioner, and obviously, I think that this is going to be a pilot program, it's something worth exploring. As someone who's been, I'll say, "the victim" in quotation marks of being towed quite a few times, I'd like to thank Council McCarthy again for giving me a ride out to the Hyde Park tow lot when that happened. I do understand, you know, the inconvenience and that can sometimes feel punitive, but clean streets have to be a priority for, obviously, for our residents, but for the visitors and the people who work in the city every day. So with that being the top priority and knowing that this is going to be in the pilot zone, we'll be in Charlestown with, obviously, you know, some local support there and the assurances from the commissioners that we are still going to focus on clean streets and making sure the towing program continues, especially in our downtown neighborhoods, that will be supporting the new draft. Thank you.
Council Lennahan?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I rise because, you know, I'd worked on this project for about a year and a half in trying to get the past administration to seriously consider to removing towing within those neighborhoods that have posted street cleaning, which is an important factor here. Not all neighborhoods have posted street cleaning. So only those that do are the ones that get towed, and only the ones that do pay the ticket. And of a ticket today, a $40 ticket and $110 for the tow and the fee and storage, it comes out to $150. And like Council Zakeham, at least every car in my house has been to the tow lot at least once. And I do find it punitive by putting up a ticket to $90 to $100. It would allow the City of Boston to impose a significant fine. Often, we don't see people parking in bus stops because it's $100, often we don't, which we don't tow. Often, we don't see people parking at fire hydrants. You know, culturally, it's not a good thing, but generally, people don't do it because it costs $100 bucks. Handicap parking on handicap ramps, folks don't do it generally. But if they do, the $100 goes to the city car office and not out of $150 levy on a citizen of the city generally, all of it, only $40 goes to the city. So that's what's wrong with this program. I'm excited that the administration is taking a new look at this. Just to go on a little bit further, I had a series of meetings, and we were trying to turn South Boston into that pilot location. And I had three meetings out in the neighborhoods with not an overwhelming response. I would say the majority of the response was, yes, get rid of the towing. But it wasn't like 200 people showed up and they all said, you know, hang the tow truck drives. It just didn't turn out that way. So the administration didn't feel compelled enough to do this. Plus, they had a lot in the game. It took a lot, as Council La Matina indicated, early on back in 2003, to start towing vehicles. And it has made a difference, and the streets are cleaner because they do. But $100 ticket will have 70%, if not 80% of that same result. Not to mention, you can spend some of that money, that additional money we have, and you can clean underneath the car. I mean, a leaf blower gets everything out of the way. One person could, you know. So there's another way to address this. Here's another factor that most folks don't know. One out of every four tickets that are imposed on violators gets towed. One in four. So it's a crapshoot, and not everybody's getting the same penalty. So again, I'm very excited about this opportunity. I wasn't going to speak, but it hit to the core of what I had worked on for almost 18 months, and I'm excited that the mayor and the administration saw. I support it wholeheartedly, and this test will be a really, a great opportunity for us to move this throughout other parts of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wu?
Thank you very much. I'm glad to hear I'm not the only one who's had to ask for the ride of shame after the Hyde Park tow lot. As a South End resident, I hear every street is street cleaning on some day of the week. And so it's not just an issue of intention, but also remembering where you put the car that night, and especially as parking gets more and more congested on the resident streets, keeping track of what streets are wet days. And I think most important is the cleanliness of neighborhoods as a whole, and that certainly outweighs the forgetfulness of individuals who mean well. But I think it's going to come down to the details. And as Council President said, there are other ways to make this work in terms of hokey's or addressing cleanliness if cars stay parked during street cleaning days, but it's going to come down to the pilot and seeing in reality what's going to happen. So I will be willing to support this as a pilot with the sunset clause with the neighborhood that is under question right now, but we'll be looking very seriously at the numbers should it try to expand to any of the other downtown neighborhoods.
Thank you, Council Wu. Council Yancey? Council Yancy?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I have been blessed with some very nosey neighbors. So on Wednesday morning, which is tow time for us in Hooper Street, I generally get a ring on the doorbell or knock on the door if I'm not parked in my driveway. So I want to publicly thank them for saving me from taking that ride of shame to Councilor McCarthy's district. But I have, like all of our colleagues, Mr. President, I have mixed feelings about this. We've been working very, very hard to improve the cleanliness of the city of Boston. A lot of people have been making great sacrifices to do that. But I know of at least one case where this aggressive towing resulted in incarceration on one of my, one of my hardworking constituents, who happened to be a teacher, who went out in her nightgown to try to rescue her car and didn't appreciate the confrontation, and she was, she ended up being arrested. But I'm willing to give it a try. I'm willing to see how the pilot program works. That coupled with aggressive public education, I think, will go a long way to achieving the goal of maintaining a clean city and not being too onerous on many hardworking families. But only on a trial basis, I'm glad it does have a sunset provision. I may even give the commissioner a call and suggest some other areas to run this pilot program. I understand this at the discretion of the Traffic Transportation Commissioner, so I hope my understanding is correct, and I look forward to monitoring this program on a fairly regular basis. I certainly agree with the points raised by a good colleague, Council Murphy, that it could go the other way, and people can become lax and less considerate of the people in Boston by not moving their cars or responding appropriately. But I'm willing to give it a try, so I will be supporting it.
Thank you, Council Yancy. Council McCarthy?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I know Council Zakeham now appreciates the commute that I have every day. It is quite a trip. You know, I support the pilot program. We don't have a lot of posted sweeping in my district. But the one thing that we do have, really to the core of this that we haven't talked about, is the fact that the city of Boston still does not have an anti-litter campaign. And the reality is, that's our litter on the streets. 99% of the litter that we're cleaning up, Public Works didn't put it there. Our neighbors did, our friends did. However it gets there, it got there, and we continue to not give the responsibility to the people who live there. I know when I pull up my driveway, if I, I have a driveway, sorry, if I pull up my driveway and I see trash in the gutter, I either get it or I send my boys out there to get it, and we clean up on our own neighborhood. And once again, you know, it comes down to the city of cleaning and moving and towing and discussing and debating, when in actuality, if people would just take care of their own property in front of their own house, you know, we'd be much better off. So, you know, in light of this, I really hope that at some point in time, I know Public Works has kicked it around numerous years, but the city should have a true anti-litter campaign, and maybe this discussion wouldn't have to happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Council McCarthy. Council Jackson?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also, in response to what you brought up, I also think the areas of the city that are closest to the highest number of tow lots are the ones who actually get towed the most. Roxbury is also very close to many of the tow lots. So if we really look at the issue of fairness and equity, the fact that you're closer and then they could buzz to the tow lot, drop your cars faster, a higher concentration of those vehicles actually get towed. I was actually speaking with the chair, and the other issue that you noted, and I think is to be noted, in Charlestown, BTD got $400,000. That would probably double based on what was said in the hearing. And so we then could hire more hokeys. We could hire and deal with some of the issues that we have in Public Works across the city of Boston. We've been looking for revenue for a long time. This is an area that we should take this revenue in, rather than parsing it out to folks who are towing. So I think we, by taking this revenue in, would be better stewards of those dollars in terms of where those, that dollar, those dollars would flow. So I think this is a great thing in terms of the actual innovation, which I think the innovation here is that we're going to try something.
Yeah.
Right? Oftentimes in government, we go forward and we just absolutely put a rule or a law or procedure and/or policy in place. The real innovation is, hey, we're being innovative by actually trying it. We try it from now to November. If it works, that's great, and if it doesn't work, then we don't codify it. So I think that, to me, is innovation in the type of government and the approach of government that we should see, and so I will be supporting this today. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Council Flaherty moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0698 and a new draft. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0698 has passed in a new draft. The lone wolf voted. Council Murphy doubts the vote. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Council Baker?
Yes.
Council Baker, yes. Council Siomo?
Yes.
Council Flaherty?
Yes.
Council Flaherty, yes. Council Jackson?
Yes.
Council Jackson, yes. Council La Matina?
Yes.
Council La Matina, yes. Council Linehan?
Yes.
Council Linehan, yes. Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council McCarthy, yes. Council Murphy?
No.
Council Murphy, no. Council O'Malley?
Yes.
Council O'Malley, yes. Council Presley?
Yes.
Council Presley, yes. Council Wu?
Yes.
Council Yancy?
Yes.
Council Yancy, yes. And Council Zakeham?
Yes.
Council Zakeham, yes. We have 12 votes in the affirmative and one vote in the negative, Mr. President.
We have 12 votes in the affirmative and one in the negative, and docket 0698 has passed in a new draft. Matters recently heard for possible action. Madam Clerk?
Docket number 0464, order for a hearing regarding the 2024 Summer Olympics.
Docket 0464 will remain in the committee.
Docket number 0270, order for a hearing regarding the Boston City Charter and proposed revisions.
Docket 026, I'm sorry, 0270 will remain in the Special Committee on Charter Reform.
Docket number 0564, order for a hearing to discuss the implementation of a recycling program for all number six plastics.
Council O'Malley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to begin by thanking my colleague, my, our at-large colleague, Council Murphy, for his leadership on this issue. We originally had a hearing last month. Earlier this week, we had our first working session, and this is something Council Murphy has worked on for quite some time, the whole notion of recycling polystyrene or styrofoam number six plastics. There's a company that has been interested in helping us obtain or buying for, paying for an optical scanner, as well as the latest sort of overture from them was to agree to a fairly generous monthly tonnage fee to pay the city should we pursue the ability to recycle number six plastics. We had a terrific meeting with Austin Blackman, from Chief of Energy and Environment, as well as folks representing Casella, which is our vendor for our recycling program. So I think there's a lot of interest in this. It's a very intriguing idea. Obviously, we want to make sure if we're able to do this, we do it right. So we will have at least one more working session sometime in June, and until that time, I ask that this matter remain in committee.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. Docket 0564 will remain in the Committee on Environment and Parks. Madam Clerk?
Dockets number 0694 through 0697, orders for FY16, I'm sorry, FY16 revolving funds for the Boston Police Department reestablished in accordance with general laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half.
Docket 0694 through 0697 will remain in the committee on Ways and Means.
Dockets number 0662 through 0664, order for the FY16 operating budget, including annual appropriation and tax order, annual appropriations for the school department, and appropriations for other post-employment benefits known as OPIV.
Docket 0662 through 0664 will remain in the committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0665 through 0680, order for the FY16 capital budget, including loan orders and lease and purchase agreements.
Docket 0665 through 0680 will remain in the committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0860, message and order for the city council, order approving modification to the Park Plaza Urban Renewal Plan, adopted by the Boston Redevelopment Authority by a resolution dated April 16, 2015.
Our chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor, Council La Matina, on docket 0860.
Today, the Committee on Economic Development and Planning and Labor held a meeting. A hearing on docket number 0860 regarding proposed modifications to the BRA Park Plaza Urban Renewal Plan. Currently, Emerson owns a building, the Little Building, which is a dormitory, which houses 750 students. The new modification would increase the floor ratio from 10.4 to 12.1. And because they increased the ratio, that's why they need a modification. And what this would do, add 300 more beds for a total of 1,050 beds. This building was built in 1917. It's approaching its 100th anniversary, and it's been found to be unsafe. The facade is crumbling, so they're going to do a major complete renovation to the building, and it's going to take two years. The final result will be a new dormitory, dormitory, as well as campus police station, a fitness center, a dining hall, major dining hall, and it will increase the beds. And also, Emerson will achieve its goal to house 70% of their students. So this is, like I said, one of the most recognized buildings in the city, the Little Building, and it's great to see it preserved, and so I recommend this order to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Council La Matina. Council La Matina moves acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0860. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0860 has passed. Madam Clerk, personnel audits.
Docket number 0917, Council Linehan for Council Presley.
Council Presley moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0917. All in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0917 has passed.
Docket number 0918, Council Linehan for Council Presley.
Council Presley moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 0918. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, docket 0918 has passed. I'm informed by the clerk that there are seven late-file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to today's agenda. Hearing no objection, the matters are so added to the agenda. The clerk will read the first late-file matter.
Order for Council Bill Linehan for Council La Matina, order that effective-
Council La Matina moves suspension of the rules and passage of the first late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the first late-file matter has passed.
Council Bill Linehan for Council La Matina, order that effective-
Council La Matina moves suspension of the rules and passage of the second late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the second late-file matter has passed.
Council Bill Linehan for Council Baker, order that effective-
Council Baker moves suspension of the rules and passage of the third late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the third late-file matter has passed.
Council Bill Linehan for Council Baker, order that effective-
Council Baker moves suspension of the rules and passage of the fourth late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The fourth late-file matter has passed.
Council Bill Linehan for Council McCarthy.
Council McCarthy moves suspension of the rules and passage of the fifth late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The fifth late-file matter has passed.
Council Bill Linehan for Council McCarthy, order that effective-
Council McCarthy moves suspension of the rules and passage of the sixth late-file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the sixth late-file matter has passed.
Offered by Council Stephen J. Murphy, an order for hearing regarding the Boston Public Library and security procedures. Whereas the Boston Public Library plays a significant role as an informational and educational resource for residents of the city of Boston, therefore be it ordered that the appropriate committee of the Boston City Council holds a hearing to discuss the implications of the stolen prints at the city of Boston, and to examine whether the Boston Public Library has insurance on documents, works, and collections. Representatives from the city of Boston and other interested parties shall be invited to attend. Files in the city council on May 20, 2015.
Council Murphy, you have the floor on the seventh late-file matter.
I awoke, like we all did this morning, to a story in both the daily newspapers about a theft of over $600,000 in priceless artwork from the Boston Public Library's main branch. And I filed this order because I want to know what the taxpayers of Boston are on the hook here for. What are the security procedures at the public library? I don't know. Well, I know they have metal detectors. Beyond that, I'm not sure. Do they have a professional security contract with people? Does the Boston Police play any role? Are these things insured? Are they self-insured? Like, the city is self-insured, so if all of these works of art are self-insured, then I think we're on the hook for all of it. And I thought it would be something good to explore during budget season and during the time when they're offering bonuses over there behind our backs. Maybe they could increase their security by $25,000 rather than pay bonuses to the president. Just a suggestion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Madam Clerk, could you please add my name to that matter? And Council McCarthy's name to that matter? Council Wu's name to that matter? Council Baker? Council Siomo? Council Flaherty and Council Jackson's name to that matter? And Council Late La Matina to that matter, please? All right, that matter will be placed in the Committee on Public Safety. Is there anybody who would like to pull something from the green sheets at this time? I see no green lights. There are two late-file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Hearing no objections, the matters are so added. The chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. I'd ask all guests and all members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of the following individuals. For the Chair and Council Flaherty, Clement Rocky Kearns. For Council Yancy, Christina Kiki Popar. B.B. King. Kelly Mae Young. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. It is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, June 3, at noon. All those in favor of adjournments, please say aye. And all opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the council is so adjourned. Have a nice weekend, everybody. Enjoy that Memorial Day weekend. Enjoy that Memorial Day weekend.